Call this meeting to order. I'd like to inform the public of the location of the Open Meetings Act posted in the council chamber and accessible to members of the public. At this time, I'd ask for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Granquist.
Here.
Arnz.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Beckman.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Hildebrand.
Here.
Okay, at this time, I'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda, moving number, item number eight, 11, and 17 to the regular agenda.
So moved.
Your Honor, I will be abstaining from the consent agenda.
All right.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, McCarthy, Granquist, Arnz, Jensen, Langy, Webb, Beckman, abstaining, Hildebrand, motion carries.
Okay, at this time, I need a motion to approve the full agenda, including eight, 11, and 17.
So moved.
Your Honor, I will be abstaining from the full agenda.
Second.
Motion second, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative, McCarthy, Granquist, Arnz, Jensen, Langy, Webb, Beckman, abstaining, Hildebrand, motion carries.
All right, at this time, we move to the special presentations of tonight's meeting. The first one is to proclaim June 9 through 13, 2025 as Language Access Week. Language Access Week proclamation, whereas founded in 2016, World Speaks has championed the mission to ensure that every person in our community has equitable access to vital information, resources, community engagement, and a sense of belonging regardless of the language they speak. And whereas the city of Norfolk is dedicated to advancing this mission by developing and implementing a comprehensive language access plan that fosters inclusive communication across all city services and departments. And whereas Norfolk, Nebraska is home to a growing and diverse population, including a significant number of residents from immigrated and refugee backgrounds, approximately 15% of Norfolk's population identifies as Hispanic or Latino, and many households speak a language other than English at home. These multilingual community members contribute greatly to Norfolk's workforce, culture, and economy, with vibrant communities including newcomers from Mexico, Guatemala, South Sudan, and Vietnam, enriching the civic and cultural fabric of our city. And whereas Norfolk Public School reflects its diversity, serving a student body where over 25 languages are spoken in the home, English-language learners represent more than 15% of the district's enrollment. This district's commitment to equitable education is evident through bilingual outreach and support programs that ensure access to learning and engagement for all families. And whereas the city of Norfolk acknowledges that language access is vital to creating a safe, inclusive, and informed community, removing language barriers is essential to enabling every resident a fully engaged in public service, participation in civic life, and access to critical information, particularly in areas such as healthcare, public safety, and education. And whereas through collaborative partnerships with schools, healthcare providers, businesses, and community organizations, the city of Norfolk is committed to building a welcoming environment that champions equity and inclusion for all. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim the week of June 9 through 13, 2025, as Language Access Week in the city of Norfolk, and we encourage all residents, organizations, and public institutions to join in recognizing the importance of language access to the support efforts that foster inclusion, equity in our community. Somebody turn your phone off, please. It's a reminder for everybody out there to turn their phones off. All right, is somebody here to receive this proclamation?
Hello?
Hi, my name is Gustavo Magaña.
Oh, I was gonna introduce.
Oh, go for it.
So, Mayor and council, we have, in the fall, we had you approve the language access plan. And so if you remember that, that's in compliance of Title VI of the Civil Rights Act. Part of that plan was to hire someone at the city, so in the HR department, we do have an HR specialist, Gus, who we hired about six months ago. So he's done a lot of work, a ton of efforts, and he's been partnering internally with the city, externally with the community. And so he just has a few words, and we appreciate your support and your approval of that plan. So, thank you.
Thank you. So. Good evening, Mayor Shane, and members of the city council. My name is Gustavo Magaña, and I serve as a human resource specialist for the city of Norfolk. I have been leading our efforts to strengthen language access across city services over the past several months. I've been working closely with city departments, local partners, and community members to put Norfolk's language access plan into action. This plan ensures that all residents, especially those who speak a language other than English, can access city services, understand important information, and feel included in our community. Based on our Language Line data, some of the most common spoken languages in Norfolk include Spanish as the number one, then we also have Vietnamese, Russian, Karen, Romanian, French, and Tigrinya. I never knew what Tigrinya was coming from, but it's from Ethiopia. So we have some people from there, too. We're using the data to guide our efforts and meet people where they are. Here are some of the steps we've already taken. We translated city documents and forms and public notices into Spanish with more languages to follow. We added bilingual signage in public spaces such as the library, Aqua Adventure waterpark, and the admin building. We developed language access toolkits, which include I-SPE cards and information lines for the city departments to help them serve non-English-speaking residents more effectively. We offer staff training on how to recognize language needs and how to access interpretation services. We're also working on several forward-looking efforts. We are currently applying for grants to expand translated signage and purchase interpretation tools, especially for our public safety departments, including police and fire. We are beginning the process of identifying key bilingual staff members for potential language certification, so we can better support our community with internal resources. I want to give a special thank you to the Nebraska Organizing Project for their ongoing support and guidance throughout this process. Their partnership has been invaluable as we work to make Norfolk more accessible and inclusive. All this work has led us to where we are today, requesting a proclamation to recognize June 9 through the 13th as Language Access Week in the city of Norfolk. With the help of World Speaks and other partners, we are proud to join cities across Nebraska in highlighting the importance of language equity and inclusion. Language access is more than just words. It's about building trust, ensuring fairness, and making sure every member of our community feels seen, heard, and valued. Thank you again for your support. I'm proud of the progress we've made and excited for what's still ahead of us. Thank you. And with your permission, could I, I would like to do this speech in Spanish also for anyone that speaks Spanish. Buenas noches, alcalde Shane and miembros del consejo municipal. Gracias por darme la oportunidad de hablar con ustedes esta noche. Mi nombre es Gustavo Magaña y soy el especialista en recursos humanos de la ciudad de Norfolk. Mi trabajo incluye principalmente apoyar el acceso al idioma para todos nuestros residentes. Durante los últimos meses he estado trabajando con los departamentos de la ciudad, organizaciones locales, y miembros de la comunidad para poner en práctica el Plan de Acceso Linguístico. Este plan busca que todas las personas, sin importar el idioma que hablen, puedan entender la información de la ciudad y recibir los servicios que necesitan. Según los datos de Language Line, algunos de los idiomas más comunes en Norfolk son español, vietnamita, ruso, karen, rumano, francés, y tigrinya. Usamos esta información para enfocar nuestros esfuerzos. Algunas acciones que ya hemos tomado fueron traducir documentos importantes de la ciudad en español y planeamos hacerlo en más idiomas. Colocamos letreros bilingües en lugares públicos como la biblioteca, el parque acuático Aqua Adventure, y el edificio de administración. Creamos un kit con tarjetas "Yo hablo" e información para que los empleados de la ciudad sepan cómo ayudar a personas que no hablan inglés. Dimos entrenamiento al personal para que sepan cuándo y cómo usar servicios de interpretación. También estamos trabajando en otras ideas. Estamos solicitando fondos para traducir más letreros y comprar herramientas de interpretación para el departamento de policías y de bomberos. Estamos empezando a identificar empleados bilingües que podrían certificarse para ayudar mejor a la comunidad. Y quiero dar un agradecimiento especialmente al Nebraska Organizing Project por su apoyo y orientación durante todo este proceso. También agradezco a World Speaks por ayudarnos a llegar a este momento. Todo este trabajo nos trae hoy aquí para pedir una proclamación que declare la semana del 9 al 13 de junio como la semana de acceso lingüístico en la ciudad de Norfolk. Estamos orgullosos de unirnos a otras ciudades de Nebraska para apoyar la inclusión y el acceso para todos. El acceso al idioma no es solo traducir palabras, es una manera de generar confianza, igualdad, y hacer que todos se sientan escuchados y valorados. Gracias por su tiempo y por apoyar este esfuerzo. Estoy muy orgulloso de mi trabajo que hemos hecho y con muchas ganas de seguir adelante. Muchas gracias. Thank you.
I will say gracias. My Spanish teacher, I took two years in high school, and she'd be very disappointed in me of how little I understood of that second speech you gave, but.
All right, I welcome the Nebraska Organizing Project to take the picture with us and the HR team with us, too.
All right, ready? Three, two, one.
You get up here late.
Thank you. Thank you, Shane.
All right, onto the next one here. Distinguished Citizenship Recognition, Don Davis, People Power Award. Whereas Don Davis, longtime resident of Norfolk, Nebraska, has demonstrated an exceptional commitment to the betterment of our community. And whereas, since 2020, Don has voluntarily walked through the city of Norfolk to pick up trash, dedicating his personal time and energy to keeping our city clean and beautiful. And whereas, his efforts have made a visible and meaningful impact on numerous public areas, including the US Bank Memorial, Norfolk Avenue, the flood control zone, and green spaces along 13th Street. And whereas, his actions serve as an inspiring example of civic responsibility and environmental stewardship for all residents. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Shane Claus, the mayor of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, along with the Norfolk City Council, hereby recognize Don Davis for his extraordinary act of citizenship. Come out there, do you?
I saw you in the parking lot earlier. You were wandering around looking for a way in like I was.
Yeah.
It was close, right?
I finally did the thing and read some directions.
Thank you very much. Don, you're welcome to say something if you want to. Thank you for everything you've done for our community.
If I get to say something, it's strange how this started, because it started because of a parking lot out by the levee, and then it just expanded. And it's kind of like my retirement belt. The thing is, is what I've found will blow you away. I've learned what trash people, I come to find straws, cigarette boxes, I found cats. In fact, this cat is one of them I found. And it's been fascinating. And then I've run into the city, some people at the city, and I'm sure a lot of people have seen me. It's something I never thought I would do, let alone get recognized for, but yet I do understand it, too, because I wish more people in this, in the city would clean up trash.
Thanks for the example yourself.
Well, I hope, I hope.
Continue and example your setting.
Well, it's something that fascinated me, because it's something you don't think of doing.
Right.
Well, the real hard part was when I did the, you know how they did that apartment construction down by the levee?
Right.
In 2020, they were finally finishing that up, and in the process, I had to clean along the riverbank. I even went to that point. I mean, if you've ever looked over that riverbank, there was nothing here. I'm over 70 years old, and I'm going up and down there, and you'll be amazed, the garbage, I always wondered how the city guys came when they came to the garbage sign and found it. I was like, where did all that come from? But it's been, I never dreamed this could happen, but I do want to thank you. I just wish I could encourage more people. Oh!
A little bigger. Yeah, so that's for you also, so.
Oh, thank you. It's something I never thought I would end up doing in the city, because I've been here since 1993.
Well, May thinks you could help on his budget over there.
I even ran into some girls one time that were picking up the garbage. And I very much was one of the few guys told them, well, yeah, I know exactly. I mean, there's certain areas, I just happen to be working where I happen to block. But what fascinates me is the cans I found. I used to, I was collecting cans when I worked for Norfolk Kind of Metal, and naturally, when I got retired, well, you're not going to stop doing that. So I've had boxes in my truck, and I've had 17, 18 batches of cans, which probably would be about 160 to 200 pounds of cans.
There you go.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, onto the number, item number eight. Need a motion for the May sales tax report, to approve the May sales tax report.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
Motion second. Randy is going to be leading this discussion.
Yes. For May, we were down about $100,000, or 9.2% from last May. That's not as bad as it sounds, because there was an error in the motor vehicle sales tax in the prior year. In April of the prior year, we didn't get any motor vehicle sales tax to speak of, just a few hundred dollars. And they made up for that in May of 2024. So we got doubled up motor vehicle sales tax last year, and then we just got a normal motor vehicle sales tax this year. And that accounts for about $81,000 of the decrease. Take that out, we're only down a little over $19,000, or about 1.9%. Still not good, but not as bad as it looks at first blush. As you can see, year-to-date, we're down over a half million dollars, $564,000. Budget variance is $124,000 under budget, or about a percent and a half under budget. And actual is about 6.7% under budget. We have averaged the last 10 years about a four and a half, I think it's actually a 4.7% annual growth rate in sales tax. And the last few years, I believe since 2017, we've been over 6% growth in sales tax every year. So being down 6% as opposed to being up 6% is a big deal. But that's where we're sitting, and when you look at other cities in Nebraska, we're not the only one that's been experiencing decreases. There's a set of, when we first started experiencing these decreases, I went and looked at some cities somewhere inside us, and some cities close to us, and also Omaha and Lincoln, to see how they were doing. And every month this year, we've been tracking how we've been doing compared to those same set of cities. And in this month of that set of cities, there was 11 of them that were down, there was five of them that were up. So we're still continuing to kind of follow the general overall state trend. But definitely doesn't bode good for budget preparation this year. Answer any questions.
Randy, you think a lot of this contributes to the extreme inflation we saw previous two years, where actually, and then when you even out with only 3%, say, inflation at this year, so maybe the buying power is similar, but the inflation is not, you know, that, it's almost like there was a false hope running behind inflation with the economy over the last few years, and it was an economy based on inflation and not based on true purchasing power. Would you kind of agree to that?
Yeah, I believe inflation would definitely impact those sales tax numbers. And so we look every year at the, when we do our long-term financial plan, at the growth in sales tax, what that's averaged over the last 10 years, and that's what we put in our financial plan. And we also look at what it's averaged each one of those years, going down like the last nine years, the last eight years, and so on. And when you look at that, the average from 2017 to the present, which would be eight years, I believe that was six and a half, then from 2018 to the present was seven, 2019 to the present was about 7.7, 2020 to the present was eight, and then 2021 to the present was 6.6, and then 6.708, and then 6.1, which was the actual percentage increase we had in 2024 over the prior year. So, yeah, there was, inflation definitely impacts that for sure. But with, even before those periods of high inflation, we were having nice sales tax increases. And this year, we're having, I'm not sure what's doing that, a SAG economy, or there's a lot of economic uncertainty in general with tariffs going on and off. But it isn't isolated to Norfolk.
Questions for Randy? For the audience, any members of the public want to speak to this?
Lock the music.
I'm not the only one with the phone still on.
Jim McKenzie, I just thought I would add a little, a little color to that as you're going into your budget season. So I compared Norfolk to our sister cities that are not metro, outside metro, between 20,000 and 50,000. And Norfolk was down 6.71%. Columbus was up 2.79%. Fremont was down 1.76%. Grand Island was up 1.63%. Carney's up 4.6%. North Platte's down 2.4, 2.5%. And Hastings is about flat, up one point, excuse me, up 0.1%. And Sioux City, which is out of that range of population, but closed, they were up 6.72%. And that's, that's over the same number of months, not a single month, but, but the entire fiscal year. So I think it's important to recognize that, that Norfolk's, we're down more than all of our sister cities, and somewhat significantly. So I just think we need to at least look at that and honestly reflect on that. Thanks.
Anyone else? We've got a motion, a second. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay, item 11, motion, consideration of approval of Resolution 2025-20 adopting the city of Norfolk Multi-Model Transportation Action Plan, or MTAP.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of Resolution 2025-20.
Second. We have a motion, second. Anna will be leading the discussion on this today.
I need to gather all my information here. I am going to put some information up on the screen, and I also have Mitch Kaufman with Tool Design is on the line. He's on a Teams meeting on my computer, so he's just kind of standing by if we have any questions for him along the way. So I'm here tonight to ask for approval for the Multi-Model Transportation Action Plan. This action plan was presented on May 5, council, to city council and the public that was here. We also had a subcommittee meeting in April with the Public Safety Subcommittee. And then we also have an action plan committee associated with this project, and presented this to them as well, and they have recommended approval for this action plan. So recommended for the city council to approve. Just wanted to kind of give a brief recap of the action plan. I know we've presented it, and the document has been online for people to review. Just a quick, you know, our introduction is, this is a Safe Streets for All USDOT grant that we had received to put together this action plan. It's a combination of a safety plan, a complete streets plan, and it involves a street design paradigm shift, so kind of revisiting the way we think about designing our streets here in Norfolk. Our goals, three major goals for this action plan, to be safe, accessible, and context-sensitive. So our, safe, oh, shoot, hang on just a second. I forgot I have, let me escape this real quick. I have Mitch on the line, I should probably include him here. Okay. So back to our slideshow here. I apologize. So our, our first goal is to make, make sure there's zero deaths and zero serious injuries on the streets within Norfolk and within the two-mile extrajurisdictional limits. We want to make sure our streets are accessible for people of all ages and abilities. We want to make sure that everybody can travel across town safely, comfortably, and conveniently using any mode of travel they prefer to use, whether it's cars, or walking, or biking, or whichever way they would like to do it. So the last thing is to make them context-sensitive, so making sure our streets are resilient, they support the adjacent land uses. For example, if it's going to be a downtown area, we'd want, you know, slower traffic speeds, we'd want more area for pedestrians. You know, if you have more of an industrial-type roadway, you know, there might be faster speeds, but still providing those, those. So our safe, oh, shoot, hang on just a second. I forgot I have, let me escape this real quick. I have Mitch on the line, I should probably include him here. So back to our slideshow here. I apologize. So our, our first goal is to make, make sure there's zero deaths and zero serious injuries on the streets within Norfolk and within the two-mile extrajurisdictional limits. We want to make sure our streets are accessible for people of all ages and abilities. We want to make sure that everybody can travel across town safely, comfortably, comfortably, and conveniently using any mode of travel they prefer to use, whether it's cars, or walking, or biking, or whichever way they would like to do it. So the last thing is to make them context sensitive. So making sure our streets are resilient, they support the adjacent land uses. For example, if it's gonna be a downtown area, we'd want, you know, slower traffic speeds, we'd want more area for pedestrians. You know, if you have more of an industrial-type roadway, you know, there might be faster speeds, but still providing those, those avenues for pedestrians and bicyclists, whether it's on-street, off-street. So that's kind of what we talk about when we mean context-sensitive. In our action plan, there is a section in there, kind of talking about that a little more in-depth in our, in our street design guidelines. Let's see here, I think we've talked about this before, back in 2023, we put together a resolution to have zero injuries and serious, zero, serious injuries and fatalities by the year 2028. So we are on our way to making that happen by adopting this action plan. The, the paradigm shift that we were talking about was making sure, you know, the streets that we designed are not just for vehicles, they're for everybody else. And so making sure when we're making, presenting those designs, we are leaving enough room in the right-of-way for wider sidewalks or bike paths, making a roadway that might be wide enough to incorporate a bike lane, making sure we're putting in crosswalks, high-visibility crosswalks where appropriate, and things of that nature. So kind of just, you know, thinking about it more holistically. Our safe system approach, so this kind of goes back to what I was saying, is, you know, for the last, well, this is for the last 100 years, for the last, you know, a while, we, this is more of a proactive approach in preventing those serious injuries and fatalities. So that is between the safe system approach and our complete streets approach and making that paradigm shift. So our complete streets approach, there's a good visual here, it's your conventional approach on the top, it's just a roadway with, you know, for cars to drive down. Your complete streets approach, you know, adds in your crosswalks, your side paths, and makes it friendlier for everybody. We kind of went through all of this. I'll leave it open for questions. I was just gonna bring up this, this map here. So this is our high-injury network. So this kind of combines the information that Tool Design had put together based on historical crash data. They put in the community engagement results into here, and have come up with these high-injury networks, which is, you know, areas that we would like to focus on first. So I will leave it up for some questions.
And I know we talked earlier about this, but just so they can hear, what's some of the areas that we want to kind of focus on first, like, we talked about Highway 81, 275?
Right. So the next, I mean, the next steps in our, in our action plan, obviously, we're gonna get to implementation of the action plan. Part of the implementation is, you know, infrastructure improvements, improvements to crosswalks, upgrades to traffic signals, pedestrian signals, and, and things like that. A lot of this, you know, in the action plan, it's not necessarily something that's gonna be one big project, it's gonna be ongoing, and using the information in this action plan and the street design guidelines to continue to bring this into our designs. So with our CIP projects moving forward, making sure we're incorporating this, the, these new street design guidelines into our projects. But that being said, there is also a grant opportunity for implementation grant for the Safe Streets for All from the USDOT. The grant deadline is June 26th of 2025. So we are putting together a, an implementation plan. We've kind of just, in the beginning, kind of brainstorming ideas with city staff and Tool Design and our action plan committee. We plan to bring that back to the next city council meeting. But with that, with the grants requirements, so their selection criteria for that is implementing strategies that will significantly reduce or eliminate roadway fatalities and serious injuries, employing low-cost, high-strat, high-impact strategies over a wide geographic area, and then including evidence-based projects and strategies. So in our action plan, we have several pages of countermeasures that we can pull from for different areas of town. And with those, it, it talks about the increase in safety and decrease in crashes and injuries with those countermeasures. They also would like to see projects along the high-injury network. So we are looking towards those first and putting projects into those high-injury networks. So that's why I have this map up here. Some of the areas are along Norfolk Avenue from, you know, just west of 13th Street, over even east of Cottonwood, east of First Street. So, you know, looking to see what kind of improvements we can make there. There's sections along Highway 81 between Pazwalk and Omaha Avenue that we can look at making some improvements. Seventh and Omaha Avenue is another area we were considering. So none of that is set in stone right now. With the grant application, we don't need to be specific as to exactly what we're doing in every single location, but telling people, or sorry, putting on that grant application that we plan to make improvements to, you know, 12 different intersections, and we could point out the intersections. And then, you know, kind of saying we're gonna be using our guidelines and our countermeasures and our action plan to make the improvements for those areas. So, but some of the areas that we had looked at were, were those areas, Norfolk Avenue, 13th Street, Seventh and Omaha Avenue, First Street, so.
Anna, so will that be done in phases then, or is that just like one project altogether?
So that would be part of the grant ask, yes. So that would be, I mean, how we would get it, how we would, we would design it and bid it out, I can't tell you right now, but I would assume that might be in, in different phases. I don't think we'd probably just do one whole project, especially knowing that some of it might involve, some of it might involve concrete work, or, you know, new sidewalks, and some of it might include new upgraded traffic signals, you know. So those are two different contractors that would do that kind of work.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
All right, thanks, Anna. Anyone from the public wish to comment on this?
Jim, I'm gonna just put the screen back up here quickly.
Jim McKenzie, I think the plan has a lot of merit, has a lot of good, good points to it. I guess my concern is, what are the, the cost implications? Obviously, safety is a, is a critical factor. The context-sensitive where you're doing a bunch of landscaping, we can't even afford to fix our streets today. I mean, our streets, everybody knows it, we don't have enough money to fix our streets. So has anybody done a fiscal analysis of this to see what the costs are?
Anna, you want to take your, answer that for us?
So right now, as part of this plan that we've put together, we have gone through and, and done some cost estimates for each of these sections we, in our draft, or in our action plan. We have some corridor profiles for Norfolk Avenue, Highway 81, First Street. And that kind of gives you an idea of what we would be looking for to implement in those areas, and those are recommendations, you know, from our consultant. And those do have some cost estimates to them. So to answer your question, yes, we do know what some of those costs are gonna be. Not all of it is gonna be landscaping, you know, a lot of it, landscaping might be, you know, one small part of it, you know, but it's not gonna be, you know, mainly that, it's gonna be focused on safety. So we're gonna focus on making sure, you know, like in school zones, for example, you know, do the kids have sidewalks to walk onto school? Is there a safe crossing for them, you know? In areas, if, you know, I think landscaping might come into play if, if there's some issues with speeding and needing to do some traffic calming. Maybe that's where some landscape might come into play. But that, that is all gonna be, you know, we have costs for that, that'll be put in our implementation plan. Besides the grants, you know, coming up, we talked about, you know, making improvements to crosswalks, you know, so restriping, putting additional signage up, putting, you know, more lighted signs, and different things like that. So we have looked at that to budget accordingly in the next fiscal years to start putting money into some of those projects.
Have, have those cost estimates been shared with the council?
Not yet.
So we're approving this plan that says this is what we're gonna do, but we don't know what the costs are yet?
So the plan is a plan. It's, it's not anything set in stone that for sure, yes, we're doing what's on the corridor profile for Norfolk Avenue. This is a plan. This has the information we can use moving forward to decide what kind of countermeasure to implement in certain areas. So.
I appreciate that. My, my overall concern again is, safety is absolutely critical, but when we, when we can't keep up with the repairs on our streets, and I've heard numbers of $60 million to, to bring our streets up to a C level or something like that, and we add costs with this, we've got to apply some level of fiscal policy to what can we afford and what can't we afford. I'm just, I'm concerned that if we approve this plan, and this is the action plan, we're gonna do these things, are we gonna say whenever there's a project comes up, we've got to do this because this is in our plan, and now our costs went up by 25%? I just, that's my concern. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yep, I can understand that concern. I know a couple of others have asked me that as well. But as far as this, we're not, we're not approving a, a specific project or a specific design, but this is definitely gonna be used as a good tool for us moving forward. I mean, there might be instances, I'm not gonna say there won't be, but sure there might be an increased cost if we're gonna be reconstructing a roadway, maybe there might be an increased cost to put in a trail or something like that. But there could also be a decreased cost because we could look at it and say, well, maybe we don't need that wide of a roadway, you know? You know, instead of having four 12-foot lanes, you know, do we, do we need those? Can we make one, a center turn lane and, and just do bi-directional traffic? I mean, you never know, you know, what, what the future's gonna bring in, in those street sections. So I feel like it's, some of that, those costs might be outweighed.
So Anna, the, the, just make sure I have this right and it's understood out there. And my looking that's over, and you've been very forthcoming in presenting stuff to me on that, and I appreciate that. The way I understand this, this, this is just how we're going to guide ourself over the coming years. This has nothing to do with what we're budgeting for our streets or any of these projects, it's just, this is our guidance to say, as we move forward, this street, we see this problem, so as we repair this street or do things to these corners, we're going to use this action plan to guide what needs to be done, whether that's making new signage, putting up lights, whatever it is, this is our guidance. So there is absolutely no money involved in this. This is just engineering says, and streets saying, this is our guidance on how we're going to move forward, correct?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Any more discussion? More questions for Anna? Thank you, Anna. All right, see you then.
All council members voting in the affirmative, resolution 2025-20 is adopted.
All right, on to item number 17, consideration of approval for an agreement with Downtown Norfolk Association, Inc., a nonprofit, a Nebraska nonprofit corporation, and WJAG Incorporated, a Nebraska corporation, allowing the closure of Norfolk Avenue between First Street and Sixth Street, and Second Street and Third Street between the alleys north of Norfolk Avenue to the alleys south of Norfolk Avenue on Saturday, June 7th, 2025, for a car show for a cause. I'll make a motion for consideration of approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second.
So this agreement is being pulled from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda for consideration due to a late request from the event applicant. So late Friday afternoon, the event applicant contacted my office to request that the event end time be extended from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM. The original event guide submitted to city staff indicated a 3:00 PM event time, which is why that time was reflected in the agreement. The applicant explained that he did not want to feel rushed wrapping up the event and preferred to allow additional time for car owners to exit the area comfortably. The request was discussed amongst staff, and all were in agreement that the change was acceptable. So if council is comfortable with the requested 5:00 PM end time, an amendment will, to the agreement, will need to be required. I believe the applicant is here to answer any questions, so I'll invite Scott Bus up.
Good evening. Um, yeah, this is just basically-
Scott, if you don't mind signing in, if there's, there should be a.
Sorry.
And then, thank you. Didn't want to interrupt you once you started going.
Okay, um, yes, basically, this is just a, a minor adjustment to the event guide for the car show for Saturday. Since we brought the car show back downtown, this has become a very popular event, and it has grown a lot over the last couple of years. So last year, basically, we had a lot of issue with getting all the cars judged and everything taken care of in the time, 3 o'clock is the end time. So this is basically just an extension to 5 is what we're looking for, to allow more time to get all the cars judged, to get everything, you know, out of the parking spots, that kind of thing, before the roads are opened up, back up again, so.
Makes sense. Any questions for Scott? Anybody else have any questions from the audience for Scott? Well, I think you're off the hook there.
Perfect.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
So if council is comfortable, first thing we'll need is a motion to amend the agreement by replacing all references to 3:00 PM with 5:00 PM throughout the document.
I'll make the motion to amend the document as noted, anything from 3:00 PM to be 5:00 PM.
So now we will vote on the amendment. All council members voting in the affirmative, motion carries. Now we'll go back to the original motion and vote on the agreement as amended. All council members voting in the affirmative, motion carries. All council members voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Right. Item number twenty-five, motion to consideration of approval of Amendment One with desire for the architectural and engineering services for the Norfolk Police Facility renovation and expansion for a lump sum of eighty-five thousand nine hundred.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval of Amendment Number One.
I have a motion and a second. Oh, okay. Yep. Sorry, Mike. You'd like to come up?
Good evening, council members and Mayor. Mr. Ramus was unable to be here tonight. Um I do have a prepared statement from him that I wanted to read. This is Amendment One that provides an adjustment to the architectural fees. Um in the original agreement that was signed back in June of twenty twenty-two. Design services were put on hold following the failed sales tax ballot initiative that would have provided funding for this project. Plan at that point were approximately ninety percent complete. This is the stage of final review of the plans and specifications, final edits, and bidding the project. In January of twenty-four, a citizens committee was formed and asked to review potential funding methods to make this and to make a funding recommendation to the city. On March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, the citizens committee presented their recommendation of a half-cent sales tax to the city council. A half-cent city s- s- sales tax initiative was placed on the ballot and it passed. In March of this year, twenty twenty-five, the city began discussions with the architect to move the P D. project forward to final plans and specifications in preparation for bidding the project. This discussion included creating a break room on the first floor by carving out a space in the exercise room. As a function of these discussions, an estimated cost of construction was presented with a value of twelve million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, which represented the December twenty twenty-three project. Based on the construction, a total project cost then was fourteen million, three hundred thousand. This total project cost included one point five million dollars in bid and build contingencies due to the extreme market volatility in April and May and an under-determined bidding schedule. Total cost also included the architectural fees, material testing fees, fixtures, furnitures, I T., securing systems, and equipment costs. Following budget discussions with the architectural firm, the archi- the firm misinterpreted discussions and represented the total cost of the project at fifteen point three million dollars. This was in their original initial amendment letter. It was also determined that the construction cost estimate of twelve million, two hundred and seventy-one thousand used to develop the total project was, cost above, was the draft estimate used in the discussion by the design team and has ultimately been revised to ten million, nine hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars as of May fifth, twenty twenty-five. Although market volatility is still high, we have also reduced the total contingency in the project budget from one point one, to one point one million dollars based on current market conditions and bidder interest. Staff has, have had contact with multiple bidders in Norfolk area, and the interest in this project is significant. Several prime bidder, bidders are monitoring the status of this project, and the sooner we advertise for bids, the more competitive the bids will be. With the revision discussed above, the total project cost is now estimated at thirteen million, four hundred thousand. Tezary has produced a well-designed set of plans and specifications, completed a tough remodel at the P D. and expansion design, and managed city delays, all for relatively a small design fee in this amendment. Steve writes, he fully supports the amendment. I'd also like to let you know that we have two representatives from our firm here today, including our project manager, John Long. I'd like to invite them up at this time. John, can you just kind of give us a high-level um the services that are involved in this amendment?
Yes, thank you, Captain Bauer. Appreciate you guys this evening. Uh what has happened so far is we're, the proposal includes the necessary steps in order to reengage the project after having been on hold since December, two thousand twenty-three. And so that has included some changes to the building codes here in Norfolk, namely the electrical code. And so that requires our engineers to go back and check all of their design and make sure that we are meeting the current two thousand twenty-three National Electrical Code, as well as our specifications for various products, whether it's interior finishes, some of the mechanical systems, as well as some of the light fixtures and other electrical systems are out of date at this point. And so the products that had been specified before are no longer available, and so things are having to be updated. Finishes, different product lines, just we have to go back through and change those out. As well as with the extension of that time, the software, the, the instruments that we use to produce the drawings, uh they have been upgraded. Uh typically, that's not a problem, but having started in two thousand twenty-two, at this point, all of those products are no longer supported by the software manufacturers that had produced them before, Autodesk, namely. Also, at this time, the, the extension of services, our fees also escalate over time. Typically, a standard A I A. contract accounts for twenty-four months uh in order to hold that, that escalation. However, we're well outside of that from the initial contract. So all of these things have accumulated to this particular instance, as well as another, in a smaller point, the teams have changed quite a bit. Over that amount of time, teams move on. When the project went on hold, teams have to be reassigned, uh as well as, as team members have, have moved on to other, other locations. And so there is a period of time for the engineers, as well as for us, the architects, to reevaluate and to readjust our teams so that they are able to carry on uh with the rest of the project. So that i- in short form is, is where we stand today and why the, the ad service is what it is. Is there any questions for us on, on that matter?
I do. I got, I got a couple of them, actually.
Yes.
So you guys update your program, your computer program. We, we subsidized your computer program for something that was ninety percent complete?
Uh I, I wouldn't say subsidized. The fact that we need to move forward and be able to ca- carry those documents all the way through construction to as-built, uh it, it's something that we would have to be able to make an adjustment. Our plans to have the project done within twenty-four months are very close to that. Back at the time of June, two thousand twenty-two, this would not have been an issue. But at this point, the, we're, I want to say, three or four generations past that initial software. It's software that we still have, that we can continue to use. However, as we run into technical issues, they, it just is no longer supported by Autodesk, who provided the software. And unfortunately, there's always gonna be a technical issue with that kind of software.
Okay, so that's kind of the same answer for your personnel changes, then teams move on?
So for the personnel, obviously, a li- little bit different. But yes, we can't hold somebody on a project for that number of years without, you know, being able to keep them consistent. And so that and the fact that we do have people who move on. I was not the original project manager on, on the, the project. The various project managers that have been on the project previously, they're no longer with the firm at all.
Okay. And then I'll have, what, did the National Electric Safety Code change? Is that what I?
Yes, the, the National Electric Code.
Adopted it? What, what were the big changes in, in the N E S C?
I'd have to have my e- electrical engineer here to speak on that specifically. But I want to say that we, it changed two generations. Uh and so the adopted electric code was, I think it was twenty-one, I believe, before. Uh it is now, the adopted code is twenty-three National Electric Code. I, I couldn't tell you the specific changes, but I do know that there has been changes to that code since then.
Okay. And then I guess what, this is, this is probably the most heat that I've taken. Where did the fifteen point three million come from on, on the estimate? That was, and now we're down to what, thirteen point four? How, how do, how do we misjudge two million dollars in the, in this whole gamut? Because this is, I've got emails from people that have just absolutely were not support, supported this, do not support this when the fifteen point three million was in the council agenda a month ago.
Yes. Now, I really do regret the fact that that misunderstanding had, had came about. I believe what had happened is that in our, course of our meeting, we were discussing the budget that we had had previously. I think it was the, a twelve point three construction budget. And then we were discussing what the overall project budget was. And I believe that that was recorded incorrectly in the meeting notes as a total fifteen point three project budget. And it was not questioned until much later, unfortunately. For us, on the architecture side, we're really mostly concerned with the construction budget. Whatever goes into the rest of the project for you guys as a client, we want to be aware of how we can serve those things, but we're not going to question so much what that added cost is. That meeting note being recorded as it was, was incorrect, and we have discussed that extensively with uh the, the various team members on, on the City of Norfolk side to verify and make sure that there wasn't something that was held over.
So not a huge trust builder here with our community, with the ones that, and the, the multiple emails and phone calls we got. Not a huge trust builder with you guys at the moment.
Understand that.
Okay. I don't know if you, I believe maybe didn't state your name for the record, just.
Yes, Jonathan Long.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Jonathan.
I will mention that we did take it back to the citizens committee, and there are members that may want to make a statement from that committee, and I'd invite them up here now at any time.
I got one question for Jonathan, though. Uh just to review the, the current, the plans that are being, what they were estimating, we're talking about, uh the changes, were there, you know, we, at one time, there were some talks of changes, then obviously, I just want to make sure the public's aware of, this is, the current plan is the same plan that was initially used for the estimate, and there hasn't been modifications except for maybe a, a wall getting moved for a break room.
Yes, the, the changes that have been discussed as of late would not have any effect on the estimate i- in, in terms of, of material changes. Um but yes, the, that is correct.
Okay.
I als- excuse me. I also want to point out that after the ballot initiative was successful, um and the administration changes at the police department, there was a lot of interest from um citizens, elected officials, and the community uh group about the building. And there were potential changes discussed. However, those potential changes were, um could have got us to that fifteen million dollar uh budget, and that just was not acceptable. So that is also conversations that was having behind the scenes with our groups, um which could have led to the confusion of that fifteen. Those changes were never enacted. All that's ever happened was from the original plans was, uh the conference room is now a break area.
Just to verify, I'm just trying to follow, it gets a little bit confusing when we go through all these numbers.
Yeah.
Uh twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, initial budget, construction budget, ten nine or ten five? That was the overall all-in, right? Ten nine. And then today?
No, that's today's construction budget.
Total construction budget's ten nine, right?
The, the current uh construction cost estimate is ten nine.
Ten nine. And then so with all-in, with contingencies, the furniture, the computers, the data, we're at thirteen point four, with one point one million being contingencies?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Pastor Ty. Uh was also part of the citizens uh committee um to discuss this. So I want to talk about wisdom. I want to talk about leadership briefly and then also talk about um grace. Uh the first with wisdom is, I think it was prudent, um is uh what happened in twenty-three or twenty-two timeframe, there seemed to be a disconnect between us as citizens in our great city and also from city hall and from leadership here. So the formation of the citizens committee was smart just to get ideas on, to clear the air and to work forward in a way that would help bring healing to our community, uh reestablish trust and be able to set a form of how we take on big projects. With the transition that happened with our leadership uh in the police station, I would, uh I was glad that the police department did look at possible changes, as if you're a new leader coming in to not do that, in my opinion, would be negligent. Uh so I'm glad that they took that time in, but at the same time are operating in the budget realities. Uh there's a lot of rumors I heard. I'm like, that was never discussed or that is just being prudent. Um so the wisdom of all that i- gets into play of, we knew when the uh project was being presented, that we didn't know what the end cost was gonna be because of inflation. That was still of a question mark. So we knew the numbers we were working with when we presented the project to the public. We also dealt with uh the reality of needing to firm up those numbers. Uh part of that, as a committee, we decided to make sure that the sales tax increase was set at four years as a limit to make sure that we had a cap that would not allow run-on costs to have this project get too big because we didn't have those firm numbers. We made that recommendation partly to make sure we reestablish trust uh for us as a community, so when we take on other projects, we can move forward greater. The leadership aspect um that I want to talk about is it's a little bit frustrating for me to have to be here tonight. I, I do so gladly because I love our city. Our church right now is praying for city staff this week. Um and I want to support our police department, but right now it's our mega sports camp, and I'd rather be working with kids playing soccer and basketball. Um part of, part of the reality of what's going on with this is it is, i- if I was to say, taking this project on at this time with two major changes in leadership between city council mayor and also a new police chief, that's not convenient. Um but at the same time, as leaders, we need to gain the wisdom we can make. We have to make the decision and live with the consequences. And there's no cover for that. As leaders, not everyone is gonna like the decisions that you're gonna make. Which gets me to my last point of grace, is I think as a community, we need to remember that we're all neighbors. When stuff hits the fan here in Norfolk, we're the ones that have each other's back. And I know there's some frustration and some of you received email frustrations about this project, that we need to remember that we have new leadership. We've had a that we need to remember that we have new leadership, we've had a transition um in our mayor and city council. And sometimes we just need to breathe. It's not always what we want, but remember that we're also citizens. So sorry, I have to run back to camp, um but I appreciate the work you do, and I heartily approve moving forward with the project.
Thank you. Anyone else want to offer some discussion?
David Janzma, Randy, I want to, or Corey, I want to commend you for bringing to attention. I agree with you completely. How do we trust somebody that comes fifteen million to ten? The original numbers were totally different. This is out of control. I personally have no idea how we can put that much money in a building. I personally recommend building a total new building, or at least, because we're going to need it eventually. But I question the numbers, I questioned putting that kind of money in that building. And their answer is the people don't work there anymore, or they couldn't be here tonight when we're talking this kind of money? You be here, you tell us the answer. I want to know exactly what our tax dollars are buying. Originally, it was presented to us as citizens, the excess was going to street repair. Well, that's out the window. I'm just flabbergasted. I just can't believe we got this far on this project, and it's so confusing to citizens. I don't envy you guys being in that position. I don't envy me as a citizen having to deal with this. Yes, we need improvements, there's no doubt about it. Yes, the environment is better. But you got to remember who's paying for this. And we got to get our value, and we have to hold these people to the standards and the commitments. This is just crazy. But Corey, I appreciate you saying what you said. The rest of you need to think about this. But this just doesn't smell right, guys. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak at this time?
Thank you. My name's Scott Williams, and uh I was on the Citizens Committee that met in uh two thousand twenty four. I think we met four times in January, February, and March. We talked about a lot of stuff. We we, our meetings were two and three hours long each. I would, I would guess that we invested twelve to fourteen hours of our time uh in the evenings to to uh to sort this out. During those discussions, um, we asked then Chief Miller if this building was big enough. Be quite honest with you, it was our idea, our suggestion to build up over the garage, at least a room, so if you needed to expand, uh you could, you could do that without having to go back to the community. Dutifully, staff now took the initiative to figure out what that was going to cost, and it was too expensive. And, you know, we can live with that. It was just an idea that we wanted to talk about. Also, we talked about, um, we didn't feel that the ten point three million dollar, um, I don't know if it was the construction price or the project price, on quite honestly with you, but the ten point three million dollar number, we knew it was an old number. Uh, we were sitting there in January of two thousand twenty four, and the numbers of the ten point three million dollar number was produced in at least two thousand twenty two, if not a little bit earlier than that. So it wouldn't have surprised any of us that these costs would have been fourteen to fifteen million dollars, just knowing what constru- uh construction inflation was doing at the time we were meeting. Um, luckily, it, well, not luckily, it is going to be about, it's going to be thirteen point four million dollars. So our plan was to, and we did ask you to approve this for a vote of the public, um, with any, for a four year fifty, uh half cent sales tax increase. And with any money left over from the project, that would go to streets. I think we all hope that there is some money left over that can go to streets. Um, I don't think, I don't think you're going to burn it all, uh use it all up. But um I don't think anything of the original plan has gone away. Uh, the plan meaning the building that that we're, that you're going to ultimately build. Uh, Chief Miller made sure this was, then Chief Miller made sure that this was a barebone Chevrolet work truck, if you will, not a GMC Denali uh with all the bells and whistles. This, this is not a fancy building, folks. And um having been in the police station during our meetings, we saw how bad the work environment was. And um, uh, I don't think, I I wouldn't expect my staff to work in an environment like like that was. But anyway, that's neither here nor there. The architects and engineers, um, Corey, you 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 questioned them about their their cost increases. And uh I'm going to circle back to a project, you know, I don't, I'm not saying their costs need to be passed on, but I'm just going to talk about costs. About the same time of, uh, uh, well, in February of two thousand twenty two, I did a build out on on my office space for another tenant. And one of the costs that I couldn't believe was the cost of electrical. But our electrician told me then that, um, excuse me, um, conduit went from uh like two or three dollars a foot to nineteen dollars a foot. And I may not have that number right, but it was a significant increase. It was at least, there's the yellow flag. So anyway, costs have gone up, and Jim, you know that, Shane, you know that, anybody that's done a project knows that. So uh the only cost that we're going to keep incurring is the cost of waiting. And I strongly encourage you to uh approve the contract and get this project out to bid as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Troy Wirick with the Citizens Committee as well. Um, I agree with what Scott said. Um, one thing to ask Randy, if I don't want to put you on the spot, but the estimated, how much is the estimated income off the half cent sales tax right now? Maybe even factoring the fact that we maybe were, what's your best assessment?
With sales tax going down, I hate to estimate too high. I would say sixteen million would be a good number of total sales tax that this half cent will generate.
Right. And I think that that that's probably fair, that that number. Um, there will be some money left for the streets. We, again, like Scott said, when we, when we sat down and we reviewed, the reason there was people who kind of had wanted us or encouraged us to kind of quit the quit the sales tax early or after we collected a certain amount, but there was some uncertainty, again, about uh the costs and with inflation and everything that's happened. I kind of, before I came up, I wanted to see to it and make sure that the plan hadn't changed in in a large way, but it's it's, it is the same plan that we looked at a few years ago, or and, or a year and a half ago, or whatever it was now. It will continue to go up. These officers deserve better than what their work conditions are. We're going to have to do this in some manner or another. It's got to happen. It does, it does, I do agree with some of Corey's feelings as far as uh um, you know, on the architect firm and things like that, I guess, how that all works, that's for you all to sort out. But I I do, I think that 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 we're we're in a position where we 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 already have, we we have this sales tax, we're going to collect enough money to pay for this thing. There should be some money left over for streets. Still, the street amount was never going to be significant anyway, when we're looking at forty to sixty or whatever, million dollars to bring it up. There, we weren't going to, we were collecting, we we basically wanted a landing spot for the excess funds as opposed to just uh just open. So we we just, whatever's left over, we'll dump it in here. And that's, and that's kind of where we felt. Um, I appreciate what you guys all are doing. Um, I appreciate uh what Chief Ty and and his officers do. The environment that those guys are working in, that they've done for too long, I think it's time we we do, I I I think it's time to act, move forward and 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 do and uh make the adjustments and approvals and stuff that we need to. Within reason, though, look at your contract bids. If there's savings to be had, fine, but and and I think maybe with contingency, the things that will come in a little lower than that number, hope, so that's all. Thank you.
I guess I'll maybe clarify with my questions, is that I understand that we need, we we need to back our police department. We need to support our chief and and their administration. And Citizens Review Committee did a, did a great job, they did great things. I guess my my hesitation is, is that I don't know if I exactly trust this company that we have in front of us. I supported this at the ballot, I'll support it today, but when you come at a fifteen million dollar and then all of a sudden can back it down two million dollars, it makes me feel a little uneasy when you have a two million dollar difference in just a matter of a month. That makes me feel undifferent. And I don't know if I trust what was presented with us at fifteen point four million or thirteen point four million. There's my, the, and personally, that's my my take on it, is I don't know if the trust is there with this company. But I will support this tonight because this needs to be done for our police, and we'll never get an opportunity to do this again.
I guess I'm going to kind of go with with Corey on this, um, but I I'm with him. We've got to do this. The time is now, the officers deserve it, uh, the public approved it. Um, if we started over, what would the cost be then? I think that would be more than what we're looking at now. So I I think we've got to support this for the fact we need to get it done.
Um, I just want to add, excuse me, want to add, and one thing really quickly. So I just did a real quick number analysis for us. Um, if we go back to the original day, the original project of ten point three million dollars, and we add in our computer, Consumer Price Index, which Shane will tell you, Consumer Price Index is not indicative of Construction Price Index. Just it is much higher to do construction than it is the Consumer Price Index. If you add on, just, so we start with ten point three, we add a hundred and four point two percent to that for the net, for the first year. We had a hundred and seven point three for the next year, we had a hundred and three point one, we had a hundred and two point nine. You will see that the cost of this project goes to twelve million, one hundred and seventy one thousand, fifty one dollars and six cents. Take away the contingency, and that's pretty darn close to that number I just gave you right there. So with contingency, we get to the thirteen million dollar mark. I think with, my my personal opinion is, and I agree with you, Corey, that there are some weird things, but I don't think the price is what we need to be worried about, because it's our own fault for inflation took, inflation took over this project, so we have to do what we have to do to make it right and hold for our city. That's, thank you.
Brad Brooks, I'm also part of the Citizens Committee. And I've listened to all the comments tonight. Jeff, I appreciate your crunch in the numbers. I I just feel that if we vote to walk away from this, given the figures that we've got, it's not a good look. This building and everything, the stuff that we've put the officers through, all the research and everything that's been done, we need to get going on this project. The one thing that that I took away from that with what came out of the committee was, I thought we were going to be beyond letting bids on things. And my fear is if we just keep moving this down the road, hoping to get a better look at things, it's going to come back to bite us. And at the end of the day, we need, as a, as a city of Norfolk, we need to move forward and show that we can be progressive. And if we're not willing to do this, that's, that's just a black eye as far as I'm concerned. Let's get with it, get a bid out there, get going, get it built, and move on. So.
Thank you.
Jim McKenzie, first of all, I'm supportive of this project. Uh, we have to do it, it's it's much needed. But I am frustrated with the process and the communications. The architect agreement that we approved in September of twenty two with, I believe, the predecessor of this company, which I think there's been some mergers, I'm not sure what will happen, but it says the owner's budget for the cost of work is five point nine million. That's where we started. The packet of information that was on the city's website, and maybe is still on there, that was part of the twenty year sales tax project with all the the stuff lumped together, shows the police station at eight point zero million. That failed, project goes quiet until twenty twenty four. February ninth, twenty twenty four, Norfolk Daily News story about a presentation from Chief Miller at the Chamber of Commerce Building on the police station project says the estimated cost is ten point five million. May twenty two, twenty twenty four, K T I V story on Open House with the Citizens Advisory Committee says the sales tax would raise fifteen point six million dollars, and ten point one would be used to pay for the police station, and five point five million would go to street improvements. November nineteenth, twenty twenty four, after the election, Norfolk Daily News story says the project is estimated to cost ten point five million, with the remaining collected tax, sales tax funds going towards street repairs. So if this, this was what was communicated to the public prior to the vote and even after the vote, so we're telling the public pretty consistently it's ten point five million dollars. And we're going to get five point five million dollars for street repair. And now it's thirteen point four, I guess, I mean, that number is, keeps moving from fifteen to now thirteen point four. We went from eight point zero million prior to the election in twenty two to thirteen point four million now. So in two and a half years, we had a sixty seven point five percent increase, sixty seven percent in two and a half years. If we knew or expected the cost was going to be higher than the ten point five million, then why was that communicated consistently to the media? I can't find anything in the media that says anything other than ten point five million. That's what was communicated. So if we knew it was different, why wasn't something else communicated? That's my, that's my question and my concern. If you're trying to build trust with the community, we've got to be accurate with what we're telling the community when we're asking to vote for a tax increase. That that's my concern. We got to build it, we got to do it, but man, let's learn from this, and let's communicate accurately with the citizens. Thank you.
I don't think we disagree with you, Jim. I think that's for the part of the frustration you see up here today, as we were on the same impression. That ten point five million, I heard it a number of times too. Though the only thing that was during those conversations I hear, ten point five million. Possibility with inflation, it could be closer to twelve, we're looking anywhere between five point five and four point five million for roads. That's exactly what we had heard. So the frustration is muted. That's exactly what we had heard. So the frustration is mutual.
Yeah, nothing was ever, there was nothing in the media about twelve million. I can't find anything.
Recently, then recently, we've received a letter, and obviously that letter had for fifteen point one or fifteen point three on that. That was, that brought some questioning in, but at the time, we were still in the process of hiring a new police chief, so we thought we would. We've got a new police chief, can almost focus on that, bring him on board, which we did, and that was Scott's call to do that. And then after initial talks, Steve Ramis talked with him, our city engineer. Uh, that's where the three point, thirteen point four million dollar number came back to, and that's where we started talking about with the one point one million dollar contingencies. And hopefully, those contingencies are overestimated because the bid market right now is pretty positive with, uh, where we are for construction. Yes, that's the feedback we're getting back. So in all best case scenario, you take that thirteen point four, drop off one point one, cause you don't need your contingencies, and we could all end up at twelve point three and still have, what, three, two point six or two point seven for roads. But yeah, the frustration is mutual. Um, we just wanna see, but we're all there. We, none of us can control inflation. I mean, we're all in the same boat. We, 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 but we're, we're, you know, I don't have any hair to pull out, but if I did, uh, I'd be pulling it out. So we're here. We're, we know with inflation, um, Jeff did a nice, uh, little, little num, figured some numbers up on what that inflation would be. The miscommunication was, I, I don't know how to pinpoint that. You know, obviously, we've, we've went through some transitions and changes here at City Hall. Uh, you know, I think somebody alluded that out there, that, um, timing and whatnot, but I wish, I wish we'd go back in time and say twelve point four million. I wish that would've been said. Honest, I mean, it didn't, and now we're here, and so sometimes you just gotta grin and, and smile and, and move forward because that's all we can do with this project is either we, we got two options. Don't do it, start over again, and then we'll be another two years out, and then that inflationary number could be more, could be less. Um, so we're kinda at, when's the best time to go? Well, the cheapest time to build is now, right? I mean, it's always the cheapest time at this point, so I don't think any of us up here right now, Jim, disagree with you at all with that. But I think now we've just gotta make a choice, and it's frustrating. Uh, hopefully, it ends up better than we, hopefully, we can, hopefully, we, things will work out great. We get the, we do it for twelve point five, and we have some money at the end. We make the, we have, uh, the estimate that Randy's saying, and we've got a significant portion to kick back towards roads, because that's what we sold. And we have to own that. That is exactly what we sold, and I think we're willing to own that. I mean, that, that, I, heck, I said it. I was saying it when me and you were debating. I think we debated, and we both said the same thing. You know, maybe we had a different angle on it, but we were both using the ten point five, possi, maybe twelve with inflation, but we were trying to use those numbers of maybe four to five and a half million left for roads. So I, you know, you don't wanna ever come up here and sit here and say, gee, many Christmas, I, you know, we don't have anything. It's just inflation killed us on this deal. It really did.
And I, I challenge that inflation killed us, because, and I challenged Jeff's numbers, and maybe he and I could sit down and talk about that, but.
I'm looking at an inflationary, I'm looking at an inflationary calculator right now, and I plugged in, and I've got two, and this is on, mine's not updated, so it's twenty twenty-four cost. Ten-five and twenty twenty-one, if that was the initial number.
We were not ten-five at twenty twenty-one. We were eight point zero. That's on your website.
That, that was the initial on the very first, okay, so let's move it to twenty twenty-two.
I was in twenty twenty-two, so don't go to twenty twenty-one. And, and November of twenty twenty-two, on your website was eight point zero million. So in two point five years, you went from eight point zero to thirteen point four.
Yeah, and then in, in, twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-two, they started talking about it again, about the cost. And that's where we started talking, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, that's where we were throwing around the number ten-five.
Radio silent until, until this committee was formed in twenty-four.
The nu, yes, but the numbers were still being thrown around, what we were gonna do, how we were gonna move this forward, what we were gonna do. We were trying to come up with a way to interact with our, with the public in order to gain trust back again, because the initial ballot was such a poor deal. It was a horrible deal. We all know that. We all recognize that. That seventy billion, million dollar bond initiative, horrible deal. If that, if that never got done, we'd be sitting a lot, we wouldn't be arguing right now, because the police station would be done by now. We would've done it for ten million. You know, so I think, but those numbers were tossed around. The, the unfortunate fact is somewhere between A and B, no updated price. There was no updated price, and if there was, then somebody has it, we don't know about it.
But I mean, we, we talked about this in the media, and Don did his presentation. It was ten point, everything I see in the media is ten point five million dollars, and one of them was ten point one million dollars, and that was nine months ago. So we went from ten point five nine months ago to thirteen point four. So we had a, we had a thirty percent increase in nine months.
I think all of us up here would agree that those numbers were not updated, and that is shame on us.
And that's, that's.
And that's what I'm getting at. Shame on us for not having the updated numbers. We didn't.
That's my.
I don't know how we did it.
With the citizens.
We can, we can, we can point fingers or whatnot, but we don't know why the numbers did not get updated till now, and that's, that's, that's frustrating.
And so I just think we need to do a better job communicating with the citizens.
Going forward, we're doing, we are doing a local bidding process, right?
Right.
And so that, I don't know, were we doing that before? I don't, I'm not sure. Are we changing that bidding process?
We haven't, we haven't discussed our bidding process, but, and anybody can bid it. You'll, you'll have local bidders out. There'll be a lot, I believe this project will have a significant number of bidders on it, just because of bidding climate right now, which is good for the construction, uh, cost of the project. So.
So I think the council is, is driven to, to drive these costs down, have a local, uh, competitive bidding environment to, to keep the costs down and, and do our best to, to keep the costs where, as low as we can. Nobody wants, nobody wants to pay more than we have to.
So the big thing is, what we're discussing tonight is whether we're gonna do the eighty-five to get this thing going forward, regardless of whatever history you wanna throw back in here, and whether you believe or don't believe the bidding climate of where it's at as far as the construction industry. I will tell you that the bidding climate for the construction industry for this thing right now needs to get out there. And it shouldn't, I, you know, if things were misinterpreted or dollar numbers weren't accurate, it needs to still get out there. The thought process or the comment that we should tear it down and build a whole new one, then start coming up with thirty million. That's crazy. Don't, don't interrupt me. That, so, uh, the, the other thing that is, is we're discussing eighty-five thousand addition to a contract that was back in twenty twenty-two. So they're, they're ver, you know, that's, that's just where the, uh, climate is right now and will be. I mean, were you getting paid the same money that you were, well, if you were employed by the city in twenty twenty-two, you aren't now, so you're getting paid less. But you, you're getting paid more, you know, and whether we feel good about it or not, this not to move forward tonight and to be denied by this council is one of the most major mistakes I could've. The only other mistake that was probably bigger than this was lumping everything together at one time.
I agree with that.
That's enough said.
I, and I agree with, can I, can I finish here? I mean, I agree with what you're saying, Jim. We have to do this. I'm not arguing that point at all. But I just think it's important to take this opportunity to understand communications, and it's so critical with our citizens, and that trust is not there. And so I'm just stating this, we have to be, we have to be correct with our communication with the citizens. That's all I was trying to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak upon this?
Call a vote.
Chief Ty's coming up.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Let me be clear. The time to move forward with the police building expansion is now. Not next year, not after more delays, but now. The current police facility was constructed in nineteen eighty-six, and it was already outdated. Within about three years, it was too small. Today, we're operating in seventeen thousand, three hundred sixty-five square feet, when we should already be in a building over twenty-two thousand, eight hundred square feet, based on our staffing and function. Looking ahead to twenty fifty, that needs to grow to more than twenty-five thousand, five hundred square feet. This is based on a space needs assessment. This project will bring us to almost twenty-seven thousand square feet, so that'll take us into thirty years from now. It's the right size for our long-term needs and no more. This is not a luxury project, and Scott Williams stole my line. It's a Chevrolet, not a Cadillac. It's essentially efficient and focused on need. It provides adequate evidence storage, secured vehicle areas, proper locker and shower space for staff, updated training rooms, functional interviews, and forensic areas, a juvenile observation space, and basic working areas for our personnel. The only design change since the original plan is a downstairs break room, created by combining a conference room and a part of the weight room, because most of our officers, dispatchers, and record staff work on that first floor. It's not extravagant. It's simply functional design. It's just common sense. To ask people to go hiking upstairs to get a cup of coffee or to warm up leftovers, just doesn't make sense. Let's talk about cost. In September of twenty twenty-two, the projected construction cost was seven point four six million, the construction cost. By May of twenty twenty-five, that number, the construction cost, ten point nine eight million, based on the completed ninety percent construction drawings. The revised total project cost is now thirteen point four million. Why the increase? Because we waited. Material costs, labor shortages, updated building codes, and inflation all contributed. And we all know what happens when you wait again. The number goes up again. That's money we won't be able to use elsewhere, like on street repairs. The half-cent sales tax that voters approved was designed to fund this project, with any remaining revenue going towards the road improvements. The longer we delay, the more that inflation erodes that commitment. The sooner we complete this project, the more we preserve for Norfolk's infrastructure and priorities. While the roof was fixed, the building is still deteriorating in major ways. The windows leak air and water. We have inconsistent HVAC performance, and the plumbing is aging out. Our evidence rooms are packed. Officers write reports in the hallway. Eight supervisors share the same desk. And we still have no dedicated training room or juvenile processing space. We have outgrown this building and have been operating this way for years. We've driven the wheels off this Chevy. Tonight, you're being asked to approve an eighty-five thousand, nine hundred dollar Architectural Service Amendment, the final step before we put it out to bid. This is not wasteful spending. It is a fiscally responsible action to ensure we don't waste more in the future. We have the right plan, the right scope, and the right timing. Let's move forward for the safety of our citizens, the well-being of our employees, and the fiscal integrity we owe the taxpayers at Norfolk. Thank you.
Chief, I gotta say, I love your analogy, a Chevy versus a Cadillac, because we're not asking for the world. We're just asking for basics, for you guys to do your job and protect the citizens. So I applaud you for your, for your speech.
Thank you.
Is it bad that I drive a Chevy?
It is bad.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm gonna repeat the fact I support this. What I don't support is vindictiveness towards people up here speaking by councilman. You can be civil, and you can be mild-toted. Don't make it vindictive and don't make it out anybody. You wanna go to add anybody, go with me. It'll be enjoyable. Thank you.
I think that goes for everybody here.
I agree completely.
And I think we've done a pretty fairly good job.
When people are presenting numbers, and I'll be the one that say, yeah, it gets confusing. And you guys all say, we didn't know either. But unfortunately, it's everyone's job up there to know, to inform the public.
And don't disagree.
Whatever happened, happened, but it's not about going vindictive at people.
All right, let's agree to move on. Let's own up to it, move on, and let's make this vote. I think Jim called the vote, so.
Yes. So before Chief Ty, there was a call to vote, so that would take a formal motion in a second, unless we are ready, ready to go straight to a vote at this time.
All right.
I think it's important that people know that we weren't up here questioning whether or not we, uh, support the police station and gonna vote for this. So I feel like the narrative of this thing got way off track, so, um, we support the police, and we all questioned the numbers and, and how to be fiscally responsible, but it doesn't make us question our resolve in getting this done for the police. So with that said, let's vote.
Yeah. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Okay. Looks like Chief Ty is getting a little closer to driving that Chevy now, so. All right, on to item number twenty-six. Consideration of Resolution Number twenty, twenty-five dash twenty twenty-two, approving the mayor's reappointment for the clerk, treasurer, engineer, attorney, and administrative, as, as, and administrator as required by state statute. Uh, I guess that's, it's to me for discussion. Can you make a motion a second?
Make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two.
As of right now, I am agreeing to reappoint all positions, so that's what will be voting on tonight. Any further discussion or questions?
I would just say in the, in the future, I think we should break these up, because each one stands on their own merit and what they, what they've done and, and why you want them, so, other than that, this is my only comment.
Good comment, good point. Any other discussion? All right, see none. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two is adopted.
Scott, looks like you made it. Couple months in and had to go to appointment. Geez Louise. Okay, item number twenty-seven. Consideration of Approval to Award a, a contract with Elcor Paving Construction Company in Norfolk, Nebraska for the concrete, concrete improvements. Twenty twenty-five dash one project for the amount of one million, nineteen thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-five cents.
I'll offer for consideration the approval to award a contract to Elcor Paving Construction.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion, a second discussion will be led by Anna. First question is, why can't you get him to drop seventy-five cents?
I, I, we could, we could maybe work on that.
Ninety-five cents before?
In, in the final change order, bring it back down. So the, uh, the item tonight is for our concrete repair project, our concrete improvement projects for twenty twenty-five, approval for a contract with Elcor Paving for our, um, concrete repairs, or concrete improvements is the title of the, the project. I was just gonna bring this up real quick too, because I know you guys love the visuals, uh, just to show you the areas of town that we're working on. What's that? You like the visuals? I didn't mean in, in a bad way. I just, I like looking at maps too, so, um, anyways, I'll bring this up here. So this is our, uh, our project. Will cover, uh, concrete, um, repairs along Fifteenth Street down here, um, from Tahoe Zooka to Monroe. Panel repairs along Omaha Avenue, um, about halfway between Thirty-seventh and Twenty-fifth, and then just east of Twenty-fifth Street, uh, Norfolk Avenue from, um, sorry. Norfolk Avenue, Thirteenth Street, over to about Twenty-seventh Street, Benjamin Avenue, um, panel repairs from Thirty-seventh to Thirteenth, and then along Dover Drive, uh, Thirtieth to Twenty-fifth Street. Uh, we did, uh, when we did send out the advertisement for the bid, uh, we also sent this to four other. this to four other contractors, um, sent them the notice that these project plans were out for bid. Uh, we received one bid from Elcorn Paving, um, and we would, uh, that's who we would like to award that contract to. Any questions on that? Uh, they're currently working on our, our twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, concrete repair project, so they're finishing that up this summer and starting on this project as well. Hoping to get it all done this summer, um, some of it could roll into the, the following year, uh, depending on their schedule, um, and getting things done with our past project and this current project.
Now, is this subject to approval of this year, this next year's fiscal budget?
No.
No.
This is budgeted.
So these are, this is this year's fiscal budget, okay. And that CIP, that, that's in the CIP, and then would that be, are you, are you paying for these through the CHAF tax, or what, what are these improvements being funded through?
So it's the CHAF, uh, maintenance by contract, um, and then with our, well, maintenance by contract, and then, uh, we also have CHAF funding in there for our microseals and armor coats and CHAF funding for our mill and overlays.
Okay.
Which are all going to be happening this year, um, we just have not bid out the, the asphalt overlay or the chip seal yet.
Okay, all right.
Those are the funding sources.
Anna, just a quick opinion question, really has nothing to do with this, I mean, has something to do with it, but, um, I've noticed in the six months or so that I've been, been a city councilman, that, um, our engineering bids, our, our project bids tend to run lower than our engineering projected costs. What made this one, I mean, it's only twenty-five thousand, I mean, only twenty-five thousand dollars, that's a loaded question, but what made, what made the over, was it just lack of bidders that we have to pay the extra that over?
That this one is over?
Yeah.
Um, I don't, in this case, I don't think it's because of lack of bidders. I, I honestly, I think they gave us, you know, an honest price, they always have. Um, you know, the difference between my engineer's estimate that I put together, uh, I based that off of, you know, our past years, our past projects, our, um, kind of our, our, you know, unit costs that we've seen, um, a lot of it was from one of their projects last year. So, um, I looked at that, you know, added some escalation costs, but, um, it's, it's hard to predict, you know, what they might be putting in there for traffic control or what they might be putting in there for, uh, mobilization.
No, it wasn't, I mean, well, just so you know, it wasn't pointing the finger, just, I'm just trying to make sure for future references.
Yep, that's, and that's what we do for our, our engineer's estimates, we'll look at past projects and kind of get an average cost for these, this type of work.
Anna, what can we do to get more people bidding on these projects?
Um.
Is there something, we're just, that this is, we don't have them in the area, or?
You know, we do, I mean, there are other contractors in the, in the area, um, A and R Construction, they've done work for us, um, Steve Harris Construction, they did some work for us up on Benjamin. They're both, uh, not in, right in town. I mean, I think one's Pender, one's, where's A and R Pierce, uh, where's that?
Plainview.
Plainview. Um, so, I mean, they're nearby. I think some of this is probably because it is a smaller project, uh, you know, our concrete repairs are, you know, just kind of panel repairs as you go along in its different areas of town. It's not a big project that's going to be, you know, thirteen million dollar project like Benjamin Avenue, you know, so I think there, that kind of comes into play, and they might not want to come into town to do that small of a project. Um, I, I, how to get people, you know, to come bid, I, I don't know. I mean, we, we send out the notices, we have a list of contractors, and, you know, when we have a project like this, Kelly and I go through it, and, you know, I tell her, okay, well, these, you know, these contractors here, definitely send these out to them, send a notice to them, and then everybody else, you know, it's, it's available, it's advertised, and they can, they can look for it, so. But if you guys have ideas, I'm more than happy to hear them too, so.
Maybe offer everybody a bag of Tootsie Rolls if they'll put in a bid.
Yeah, maybe so, maybe so.
Well, I think Anna presented it quite well that way, because this, when you look at the work that has occurred over the last few years and the process that it is, where it's panel replacement and things like that, that's not projects that a concrete paving, a concrete paving company wants to be able to come in and put the slip form down and move. That's not what you can do with this. And so the, the thought process is, okay, do I go to Norfolk and do all these little panel replacement things, or do I go to Pender, or do I go to Wayne, or do I go to some other place and I can move my slip form in there and make, I don't have one, the questions about, okay, am I going to get this panel removed and then suddenly it rains on me a lot? I've got this big area where I can throw a slip form in and cover a lot of ground, and it's small, it's just not a conducive project, product to get the, the win-lose ratio that sits out there for a contractor. These things are a lot of loss, you could think, you could get whipped really bad on these, so. That it's only twenty-five thousand over, that didn't surprise me in the least a little bit, not knowing what happened as of January one, just in ready-mix prices alone, and that doesn't account for the other things that are going to come into play, uh, labor prices, uh, the things that the legislature has instituted as far as some of the programs that are going to hit us in October. Those all come into effect on this, so, uh, not surprising in the least a little bit. The only thing I would like to say is I was very, when I looked at this, uh, I was very happy to see the amount of work that's occurring in Ward Two, uh, both on the east side of Twenty-Fifth Street and on the west side of Twenty-Fifth Street, so, um, if you look at the breakdowns of it, Ward Two turned out really well on this one.
Right. And the, in these repair areas, these repair areas are the.
We'll go for you next time.
They're the concrete repair that needs to be done before we come in and do the asphalt overlays on these street sections as well. So I know in the next, in the next years, um, our repair projects will start focusing more, um.
On Ward Three.
On Ward Three.
On Wards one, two, three, and four.
And you get two in there, thank you.
More of the residential areas we want to start focusing on in the next coming years, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions, question the audience concerning this? All right, seeing none, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
And that'll conclude tonight's meeting. We adjourn.